Do we have petitions?
Yeah.
We do?
It helps if you turn it on.
Yeah, I didn't see the mouth, by the way, again. So, it was about between noon and two or so. Like, I left at noon, and I fell by him down by the corner. I came back through at about 1:45, and no, they were up there at soccer field.
Okay. Y'all got real quiet, real fast.
It's fine.
We're having a drum roll.
All right. Let's go ahead and... I'm sorry, I was just telling Tyler, I feel like this chair I'm in gets shorter and shorter every week. I feel like I'm looking up over, I may have to switch it later. Go ahead and call this meeting to order, and I've asked our treasurer, Lori Baloo, to lead us in prayer and pledge tonight.
Heavenly Father, we are thankful to be in the city's chambers tonight. Lord, we know that the sacrifice that you made for us, and we, as we celebrate this week, Lord, pray that you would just be with each one of us here, and with our families. I pray that we give honor and praise to you. I pray, Lord, that you would be with us as we continue to conduct the business for the city. And I pray that all would honor you, in Jesus' name. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Baloo. We'll go ahead and have roll call, please.
Lamar?
Here.
Chopshier?
Here.
Radchow?
Yes.
Meshears?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Trammell?
Here.
Gantier?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Okay. We do have one petition from the audience. That's Mr. Martin. We remind everybody that the petitions are five minutes long. We ask that you be respectful of the time, and understand that the council cannot respond back to you. Is my time starting now? Yes, it's gonna start right now. I've got one, Chief. All right. Good evening, my name is Andrew Martin. I live at 1605 Willa Road here in Pryor. And first, I'm here to deliver revised legal demand to the city of Pryor, the mayor, the clerk, and the council members. This document updates my original submitted demand on April, from April 4th. It includes new evidence of falsified police reports, retaliatory enforcement, and repeated civil rights violations. This is not a new complaint, it's a formal escalation that puts the city and its insurance provider on notice. And I strongly encourage this council to take it seriously. Also handed each of you a formal public request for disclosure, asking for a simple update before you go behind closed doors tonight to discuss the Fraternal Order of Police Negotiations. I'm not asking for secrets, just a good faith summary of the people you represent. You're about to discuss union contracts, raises, off-duty vehicle policies, and another round of police and dispatcher hiring approvals. Meanwhile, this city has invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into surveillance systems, facial recognition, license plate scanners, while quietly stockpiling bullets and body armor like it's preparing for a military engagement, not serving a civilian population. We've got one of the highest-paid police forces in Oklahoma, yet they've been operating without a contract for months, receiving almost no scrutiny on pending hiring or con, spending, hiring, or conduct. Worse, I found no indication that this department requires, let alone provides constitutional training, real de-escalation training, or even the basic reading of the rights they swear to uphold. I have evidence to back all of that up. They will show up for pay, they will show up for tactical training, but they will not show up to learn how to honor the Constitution. Now, let's be honest about what's holding up these contracts, because no one's saying it. The, the union is stalling, and the city's playing along. Why? What are they asking for that's so difficult to just say no? Pryor can't afford to keep negotiating with people who show up for armor and overtime, but skip training on the rights they swear to defend. So, I'm here primarily to deliver that letter. I'm also speaking up for citizens. And we don't need more officers with bigger guns, we need fewer excuses and more accountability. Thank you. Item three, consent agenda. Do you have any items that need to be put off?
We got to J.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve, all but letter J?
Motion.
Last one, from Choya, and a second from Gantier. When you're ready, you can call for the move.
Lamar?
Yes.
Chopshier?
Yes.
Radchow?
Yes.
Meshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item J, acknowledged at the donation of a 2013 Ford Escape. VIN number 1FMCU9GX0DUC48350, from Grand River Bama Authority, GRDA, to the Pryor Police Department.
Motion.
I have a motion from Meshear, a second from Choya. This was a... Chief, you want to come explain the best way to...
So, this started probably a while over a year ago. They were kind of looking at giving away some vehicles, and our narcotics guy was talking about undercover vehicle. So, we went out there, I talked to Tommy Holcroft, who's over the maintenance at the time, with our fleet maintenance, and he showed us several vehicles, and that was one of the better ones. It was just a regular looking-for escape, and so I kind of forgot about it till the other day. Tommy sent an email and said that they had been surplus and were donating that stuff. That's just undercover stuff.
My question is, what other costs will be associated with us having this vehicle? Are we gonna have to be spending a lot of money getting it fleet service regen?
No, it's mechanically sound, the blower motor blows to the floor, but that's, other than that, mechanically, it's good. Good tire, good motor.
I mean, are we gonna have to integrate those?
No. Nope.
Because this isn't gonna be like a, a police pursuit or anything. This is definitely not... Nope. Further discussion? No, you can call for the vote.
I, I, I do, and it's just kind of clarification, because last year, we got a vehicle donated to us by MESTA. For some reason, we got rid of it just after a few months, so...
The MESTA was their request, they were down a truck and ask if they could have it back. And so, it was at their request that we, I wasn't gonna hold them up, since they donated it, we were using it at the time.
They're not gonna want this one back.
No.
Well, see, the RDA asked.
The RDA won't.
Okay.
They got money.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Call for the vote?
Chopshier?
Yes.
Radchow?
Yes.
Meshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Abstain.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
All right. Due to the nature of some of the items on the mayor's report, we're gonna kind of have to jump around a little bit. And I apologize if you guys can follow, so we'll do items A, B, C, or AB, and then we will have to step to the attorney's report to go further. We'll do H and I as well. Item A, discussion and possible action regarding the Northeast First Street rehabilitation project. The contractor has exceeded the agreed-upon timeline, and a notice to proceed has been issued to Glover and Associates, as well as the West Bond Insurance Company, the bond agent. Recommendation is that the city of Pryor review the other bids submitted and proceed with the next most responsible bidder. Other bids received, APAC Central, Inc., in the amount of $411,475.80, TriStar Construction LLC, $419,935.70, and Ellsworth Construction, in the amount of $440,010.00. So, we have a motion, and a second. I want to share with everybody kind of the status update on this, so that we can have the right discussion, whatever. I want to first make sure that everybody understands, for the public, if you guys will give me just a minute to explain this. On January 16th, we met with, it's now Glover and Associates. At one point, they were known as H and D Construction. They've done other projects towards the path, under that name, and now they're under the name Glover and Associates. So, on January 16th, we met with them, and we had a, as we always do, pre-construction conference. And in there, we line out with the city engineer, the contractors, myself, the individuals that will be working on the project, what the terms and conditions of that, of that, that project will be. And so, some of the things that were, were discussed in there were the start and stop dates. There was discussion for, we knew that some weather was coming in, some, we knew we were gonna have some cold snow days, this would be for those days, and we allotted for that. The actual start date of the project, sorry, I'm trying to find it here. It only gave me the first and second page. It was, the start was February 1st. I apologize, guys, if you noticed, it only put page one and page three on there. It was February 1st, and they were to be done by April 3rd. April 3rd came and went, and the project is still very much undone. So, on, there was a weekend, the weekend of the Oki Homesteading Fest, Mr. Hornbuckle called me and said, hey, we're ready to start. This was on a Thursday, and I said, hey, you can't start that project today. Mind you, that was after the time that they were supposed to be done. I said, you can't start that today, we've got a fest, an expo, and we're expected 3,500 to 4,000 people to be there. You cannot come today. How about we start on Monday? This was on a Thursday. Tuesday came around, and they called Dale Burke, our engineer, and said, we can't start today because we don't have the permit to move the milling machine, the ODOT permit to move the milling machine. Which I asked, okay, well, how are you gonna move it on Thursday last week? Well, the weather, the weather, the weather. It all came down to the weather and ODOT regulations. Anyway, so, we'd kind of decided at that point, we, we kind of brought Chase into it, that we were gonna send them this letter, which we call our, what do we call, notice to proceed, our, basically our right to terminate the contract. And I'd like to read that letter, so that everybody understands what was sent to them on April 9th. They, they were emailed this, they were also sent a certified copy. So, we know they got it, because the phone calls have been coming nonstop. Basically, we said, Mr. Glover and Mr. Jacks, the notice to proceed was issued January 16th, defining the work-to-comence date as February 1. Completion date is April 3rd, 2025. To date, there has been no work performed. Therefore, the city of Pryor Creek is hereby providing Glover and Associates and Westbin Insurance Company written notice that the contract for the above referenced project will be terminated per special conditions, paragraph 41, right of owner to terminate contract, if work does not commence within seven days of this notice. Now, mind you, we went seven days based upon when they received the, the letter. And so, it goes on, it's a special conditions, 41, right of owner to terminate contract. It should appear at any time that the work is not being prosecuted with sufficient competence or rapidly, a rapidity to ensure the proper completion of the work within the stipulated time. And if upon seven calendar days, written notice to the contractor fails to increase the quality or quantity of his work, or both, the owner reserves the right to annul or cancel his contract and re-let to the work, or any part thereof, at, or at the owner's option to complete it by day labor. The contractor shall not be entitled to any claims for damages on her account such annulment, and he will be held liable for costs and expenses incurred in re-letting or completing the work under this contract. All money due, the contractor will be retained until the work is completed, and all expenses and costs have been deducted. And any money due the owner, after such deductions have been made, shall be paid by the contractor to his sureties, who hereby agree to these provisions. Should you have any questions, then we provided them sufficient contact information through our engineering firm. Couple days went by after we sent that out, and then they called and wanted to know why we were canceling their contract, or threatening to. This project is not a cheap project, this project is on a thorough fair, it gets a lot of traffic. Some of that traffic is even motorcycle traffic. There's holes, and it's pretty pitted, and it needs to be done. We've, we've committed to the, to the public to get this done in good faith. And so, at some point, we have to proceed with the stuff that we may not want to do. And that is to say to a contractor, I'm sorry, but you're not starting the work in the time that was allotted, and at this point, you're 12 days past the end date, and we still haven't seen anything. And so, this afternoon, which still, they're within that seven days, they showed up on the worksite. They spray painted a couple spots that said "mill here," or "mill", which are just a few spots down by Keel Road that need to be cleaned up. And then they cut a few cuts in the road, and their tool broke, and they were done for the day. So, we're in a special predicament where they've technically started. Nonetheless, reputation is, as we expected it would be with this company, based on previous jobs that were done in the city, at the county fairgrounds, at the county, and things like that. So, when I talked to Mr. Hornbuckle this afternoon, and the council has been provided with, just at the last minute, an email that was received just 4:58 this afternoon, I told Mr. Hornbuckle that this was gonna be a discussion for the council to discuss, that they're not winning any favors with a council that's probably ready to move on. And if they think that they're going to be able to finish this project, then he sure as hell better provide a, a, a schedule that he can comply with, stay, stay on board with, and prove to us that he's gonna do it, or we're gonna have, we're gonna have some real conflict. There was a number of reasons having to do with ODOT weather regulations and 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 that, that he feels that he should be extended more grace. We're 12 days past the end of the agreed-upon time. So, I wanted to provide the council with his, his commitment to the project, and I'd like to read the email to the public that he sent today. Please use this email to follow up with our phone conversation. Glover and Associates is on site and fully committed to complete the above-mentioned project timely. The following items will be completed in this order. Saw cutting patch areas, full-depth patching, cold milling, asphalt, type four leveling course, asphalt type S4 overlay, and lastly, striping. The mentioned work will be completed according to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation's standard specs and construction plans and contract documents. Example, if the weather is wet, cold, or act of God happens, Glover and Associates cannot work. As you are aware, weather limitations have impacted the start of this project. We look forward to getting this project completed timely and safely. Should you need additional information for the above project, please feel free to contact me or Mr. Craig Glover regarding this matter. Please contact me via cellphone during the council meeting if any questions arise. I don't know that that's gonna be necessary, and again, you guys were just provided with this same time I got it. Less the time it took to print it off and get it out here to you. I would like to open this up to discussion for the council at this point.
So, I think my first question's to you, Chase, since they've started, can we continue with this?
I don't know the answer to that. I didn't know that it started the day.
Well, it was a...
Well, I mean, the items... I, I drove out from my house at around noon, and there were a couple guys, just a few, that were out there doing something close to the corner. By the time I was circling back around, it was close to 2 o'clock, nobody was there. And then, I, I actually did see that there were some folks up by, where they staged their equipment, by the soccer field, and that was it.
So, back to my question, the action items, recommendations to city of Pryor. Craig, review the other bids submitted and proceed with the next most responsible bidder. Can we do, take that action tonight?
I'm hesitant to say take it tonight, since they have started. Pardon me, so, to start, I think there's a, there's a start, and there's a good faith start. If they're just getting out there and spray painting, I think there's an argument that's not actually starting anything.
Making a few cuts in the road.
Exactly. My hesitancy is I don't, I don't have any research on it. I don't, I don't know of a situation where somebody started in seven days like this. So, before I recommend the pass...
Well, and there's nobody here from, correct.
But I, I do think there's a pretty good argument, they haven't actually started in good faith. They came out solely because they were on their seventh day to make it look like they've started.
And did the bare man.
And if you can even call it that, it sounds like it.
And also to add to, just so everybody's fully aware, the equipment, the milling machine and the lay-down machine have been at the soccer complex for, Terry, what would you say, three weeks now, four weeks?
Yeah, at least.
The fabric that they are gonna put down underneath the asphalt was also laid down there kind of haphazardly in the entrance of the soccer complex, it had to be scooted back. And then, about a week ago, they came and took those, one of those resources from our project, and took it down to Wagner to work on another project, and brought it back today. So...
So, I think there's an argument that they haven't actually started, but I don't have any case law that I've been able to review, because I didn't know that they did them today. Everything that I looked at was prior to the day, for what I was gonna tell you guys.
Well, I'd be in favor of moving on to the next one, if we can legally do so. If you feel we have to wait, or if we have to modify how we vote, tentative to your research.
It's the age-old, do you want a good answer or a fast answer?
So, could we, could we, we want to correct it? So, could we vote tonight to move on to the next qualified bidder, whatever the wording is, pending your legal review and recommendation? That that's illegal? That's appropriate? No. I think that would be what I'd like to do as well.
Yeah, I don't know why you can't do that.
So, there was someone, whoever made the motion needs to amend that, I guess, to that effect.
Are we aware, will bidders, or if the companies will even honor their bids at this point? No, at this point, Dale was gonna reach out to them. We talked about that the first part of this week, Friday. Yeah. So, we may have...
So, if, if we decide to go that route, and we vote tonight to move on, or put a halt to the job, we're gonna have to contact them tonight to let them know that. And he did offer, told you to call him on his cellphone.
Yeah, it's all...
So, or they could show up in the morning and say, we're here to work, we're working, so what are we gonna do? Be out there with a cease and... So or they could show up in the morning and say, we're here to work, we're working, so what are we going to do? Be out there with a cease and desist order from the attorney to say you're done?
Yeah, it's a it's not an ideal situation.
I mean, starting well after they should have been done is a red flag for me.
Well, not only that, it's I mean, I just want to do a timeline. The timeline is not only after they were supposed to be done, it's after they said they were going to start multiple times, just nothing. At least any communication I've been part of or aware of has not occurred, anything that was promised under the contract or after.
If we go ahead and proceed with the next bidder, have we got a different case when they say this?
That's because they started, that's what I need to check. So that that rule is they need to have set basically a seven day saving period is what that is.
My next question is, at what point, what measuring stick do we use when they're actually going to work, or they can just do like you did today, go out and pay the stripe?
Well, that's that's what I was saying. There's a difference between starting and good for starting, going out, taking a photo, by definition, yeah, or planning. I don't think that that would be sufficient for the court. But I don't have any research on this, but.
To your comment, Bruce, that's part of why when I reached out, when when I talked to him today, I this longer sheet, if you've had a chance to look at it, kind of timelines their their commitments to the project. Personally, I feel like, you know, they're they're not finishing the striping until May nineteenth. That's that's six months after almost that we talked to him originally for a project that's a less than a week project, given the right weather conditions. I think, you know, my comment to him, let me rephrase that, not I think, my comment to him tonight was, I have to put this in front of a council that's ready to move on. And if he thinks that there's any way that that you guys are going to change your opinions, he better give a commitment and a timeline that he can keep. And that's going to be the only hope he has to convince this council to to not take action.
I'm concerned with the quality of work that we are going to be receiving at this point.
And I'm also concerned if they do mess up, if we can't get them to get on the job, if they don't do something right, they're not going to fix it.
What is our severability options?
Also, all those concerns, I think, go into the original bid, unfortunately, not whether or not we can cancel it at this point.
So you need time to work on it, basically.
To get you the right answer, because I've never seen, normally when you send a seven day deal, they're done. They usually say, I'm sorry, you're right.
So in the meantime, for you working on this, do we allow them to start work, or can we stop?
Gosh, that's what I'm dealing with, and I'm hesitant to say.
Because if we stop it, then they're going to say that we stopped it when they were ready to start.
That's exactly right, and I'm hesitant for you guys to make a motion and move on to the next one. In part, because we don't know that the next one's even going to honor the bid at this point.
So so should we go with a no action until you're satisfied?
That's the safest thing. In the meantime, they might start working on it.
So something to add, and I think that this is important to know, that in talking back and forth with Dale and and Mr. Mr. Greg today. When we originally did this, and it's in the the pre pre-construction agreement, Dale has an employee who works for Infrastructure Solutions. That is to be onsite monitoring everything. That was part of our terms, if you remember when we first started this, because of their history with Prior. And, you know, kind of that whole lowest bidder is not always the best thing scenario. But the term was, we we will have somebody onsite through the whole project. At this point, my concern was, how do we know we're getting two inches and throughout the entire project? How do we know that we're getting the right mix of asphalt to moisture? For those of you that have been on Gaither by the soccer fields, you've seen where it has broken up. That is a direct result of improper asphalt mix by a lowest bidder contractor. So Dale has also agreed to add a second person who will be providing those test samples to him to make sure that those are done along the hole. So if we decide to move forward, Infrastructure Solutions at no additional cost to the project is is going to provide that to us to make sure that Glover and Associates gives us what we've paid for.
My question is, if we decide to go on tonight, at what point do we say foul, you didn't do it? Are we going to give a day, an hour, two days, or are we going to use some dark stick?
When is it scheduled if it goes to the next deadline?
I'm sorry, what?
On the schedule that he.
Says it's starting tomorrow.
Yes.
Well, it's actually says four fifteen today.
The fact that they were out there today cutting, and their their belt broke on their cutter, and they had to stop.
Of course, the other issue is, you know, he this email is kind of frustrating because we talks about weather and things that have happened. There have been long stretches of weather that had that would have been permissible for this work between the Yoki Homestead Festival and today.
And so I would have preferred one of them show up and maybe give an explanation in person as to what's going on, but.
He did offer for us to call him on the phone, so why don't we, what do y'all think about calling him on the phone and finding out what his true intent is and let him know our intent? If they don't get something done tomorrow.
I think he was serious. He would have shown up tonight.
He he's very much aware between Dale and I of what the intent could be from this.
I don't want to start calling people who don't have the respect to show up to a council meeting when they're on the agenda. Mayor, you're the CEO of the city. Do you have a preference here?
So here's my thoughts, and again, respectful. No, it's fine, because I'm I'm pretty ramped up about this. We promised, we promised not just the citizens a paved road. But there's a lot of people that work out that direction that travel that road, and I noticed today, actually, I'm sure Chief Cantrell knows it because it's right in front of his driveway. There's a pothole that you probably stand in right in the middle of the road. We're getting into motorcycle season, not that this is all about the motorcycles. But I can't even think what it would be like to drive down that road on that, or let alone hit that pothole with a with a car or get off road. This is long past due. We were prepared to get it done. We set forth everything we have, and at this point, to answer your question. Just my thoughts off this afternoon, and mind you, I am just as ready to move on as the next. He's given us a a written commitment, that this is the the schedule that he's going to follow. We have commitments from Infrastructure to, I hate to say, babysit him. I I think I think we give them, because they are not technically at the end of their seven days. I think we give them an opportunity to meet this commitment, and the first time they heck up, we tell them to get the heck out of Dodge. But I also feel like I feel like there's, I don't want to say anything wrong or inappropriate here, but I think at some point, we have to look at a company that has not once, but twice not done the best for the city in terms of these projects. The last one was the South LA project that took, oh, I don't know if you remember how, went over a month and a half to do, and it was a little bit of paving, and they showed up with faulty equipment. They had a backhoe that could only go backwards.
It's in the name.
A tobacco.
You asked Buddy about it. It was more than frustrating for him because the street department got the rep for it. It wasn't their fault. They left and came back, and they left and came back. I I think if he can make this commitment, we need to get that road done. We can't drag it out. And the other side to that is, if we have to rebid it, since this was bid, the price of asphalt has gone up exponentially. Now, either way, we're looking at having to pay more unless we give him an opportunity to admit his commitment. But I think this is a final straw for Glover and Associates and the city of Prior. That's my opinion.
So our next council meeting is in three weeks from tonight. Will you think we'll have a definitive answer at that point on what we do?
I think so.
Are you willing to wait?
I think we've got some bad weather coming in this weekend. We understand that, but also if they're going to cut our road open just before a major rainstorm. We run the risk of tearing our our base under that road. So timely and efficiently has to be of the utmost importance on this. We can't let can't let them cut it and walk away. So I think by the next council meeting, we should have an answer on which way we need to go.
So the choice point table for the night, is that what you?
I think that's probably the smartest thing for the legal standpoint. I think you've got an argument that they haven't actually started by definition in good faith. But I don't have any case law that I've got at this point.
Any further discussion on that?
Are you going to be able to get a update on that, or like just look into that and maybe even just shoot out a an email?
I can, of course, my next council meeting, they're out of seven days anyway.
Right.
Was I the one that made the motion on this? I'll change my motion to table.
I've, well, before we incur a high attorney bill, no offense to what you bill us, but I would say, why don't we pause? And if Zach feels like we need to do something, maybe that's, I mean, we do have three weeks before our next council meeting. I don't know that we need to have you looking into something that becomes a moot point. Not against that at all, but.
You're fine.
It's going to be a yes or no.
Okay.
But I would again strongly strongly consider recommending to the council to consider. In the future, when bids are taken, remember community as well. The lowest bid is not always.
To be fair, I asked this question, do we think we're going to have a problem with them to both you and Dale, and I was told, we think that they'll be fine. They did a job in Wagner, blah, 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 blah. So I don't disagree with always on the low bids, but I did ask that question the night that we passed this.
Yes, and I think in the street committee meeting, not to go against, but in the street committee meeting, we did say we've had issues with them in the past. So the main the main reason I want to have this conversation tonight is, one, I want the council's input, but two, because you guys are the ones that are traveling on that road as well, and we promised you a finished product. We want you to know why that's not necessarily done yet, and so the process has been followed behind. So that, I guess, we we can move forward. Who had the second?
I think it was me. I'll I'll change it to no action if he does this.
He's already changed the table.
Yeah, but I don't have the second.
Okay, he's.
I was the second, I'm sorry. Were we tabling it, or are we taking no action?
No action.
No action.
That's the proper, yeah, no action.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
The shares?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Antier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ammar?
Yes.
Shawshire?
Yes.
Item B, discussion of possible action to reimburse general repair and maintenance account, oh, two, two oh one, five oh nine one, amount of thirty thousand from the sale of the PYO building. This action will return the funds used from the general repair and maintenance account, oh, two, two oh one, five oh nine one, to replace the roof of the PYO building as approved by the city council on December sixth, twenty twenty two. Motion. A motion from Brashears.
I'll second.
Second from Choya. This was requested, I believe, by Charles, correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes. We discussed this a few months ago when we were going to sell this building, and I think that the money from that needs to go in to be earmarked again for the repair of the Graham Community Building. If we don't save the money and earmark it for that purpose, it's just going to magically be spent for other things that may or may not be as important or pertinent to the repair of that building. The there's going to be an argument that this was done to, it is, it was done out to pay for the roof of the building to save it in good intent, which if you hadn't done, if we had not done that back then in December of twenty twenty two, then the holes in the roof of that building would just continue to go on and on and on, and the building would be full of water, which deteriorated, it would deteriorate anymore to make it even worth selling for a surplus item, and it was purchased with the intent of bringing that building back to life. We knew that it was going to be sold at a cheap price because it was going to cost a lot of money for the seller to 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 bring it back to life, and I understand that this is to reimburse the general repair and maintenance account for that. But however, keep in mind that this was in December of twenty twenty two, which was a couple of fiscal years ago. It's not like that that money was taken out of this year's budget and just thrown away, as some people may think. That Graham Community Building is in bad shape. I have said from day one of being on this council that we don't take care of our stuff. We've sold a gravel pit, and we sold a PYO building that was donated to the city by the WA Graham Estate. Same thing applies with the Graham Community Building. It's fallen apart. We need to start, we do it for fire trucks and other purposes. We need to start saving the money back to apply towards the repair of that building. And I am totally opposed to doing anything with that other than earmarking it, and I've asked for it to be earmarked in the budget. I have yet to see a line item yet. I want that money saved to go back into the repair of the Graham Community Building. Same thing with that gravel pit money and with this PYO sale.
So I'll make a couple of points here. The first one is, and I I understand, Terry, what you're saying, you know, the the this general repair and maintenance account is to repair this building, the fire department, the library. I'd much rather take that money and put it to well maintenance and care of the the facilities that our employees have to use to make sure they, those facilities are up to the standard that we expect of them. It's my understanding that whenever we sold the PYO building and we looked through the abstract, that building was not donated to the city by Graham. Am I correct on that?
The American Legion is where we acquired.
We acquired it from the American Legion, so Graham actually sold that building to another entity or person rather than hand it off to the city. So connecting it to the Graham Community Center is a very arms length stretch, if you will.
The abstract that I read, Charles, was that the WA Graham Estate purchased that building from the American Legion with the intent of donating it to the city to be used as the youth center.
I, so when we were at the abstract, the day that we signed, we went through the abstract on that. The Graham Endowment Fund was what was applied for, for the fifty-six dollars that the city acquired that from the Legion for. The Legion acquired it from the, I'm going to get the names wrong. There was a number of families that owned that that had a theater company out of that. It was the Prior Theater. Before that, it was the Mays County Theater Company, and before that.
Castle Theater.
Castle Theater. The American Legion is the one that sold it to the city. The city used the Graham Endowment Trust, kind of like an Odie Mayer type foundation to make that fifty-six dollar purchase of that building, and that was what was written in the abstract at Mays County Abstract. I found that to be very interesting. And so I actually wrote that on the back of that. I had Mays County Abstract give us a copy of that, and that has been put in the vault, so.
So I guess that's kind of irrelevant to the main argument here, as all I'm asking is, you know, that the thirty thousand dollars be returned to the account it was originally pulled from, which said account is to maintain our current facilities. That's all I'm asking.
That you can go back three years, four years, whatever, that decisions were made and made best they were, and then try and make up that money. If that did, we got all kinds of money before we pulled back. Now, we discussed this, and we agreed, I thought, to put this money aside until E D T A does research on the community building to see if it's going to be fixed or not. If it's not, then we go another round. If we put this money in something else, it's going to be gone. It'll disappear. Just like you said, I put it one hundred percent. The Graham building's got to be taken care of. We proved it on the PYO, and we've proven it on the Graham, and I'm sure there's money in the camp to work on this building. Is there not, or is it is it broke? Hello?
Well, I think the problem is, is in our general fund, we're not operating in the black like we should be. And the problem with, and I I understand your sentiment, the problem with, that we're facing with the Graham Community Building is fifty thousand here, eighty thousand there, those are going to put Band-Aids on a building that really just needs to be overhauled from start to finish. Like it it needs an entire makeover. It's not something that we can just do onesie and twosie.
And you have to pay for that somehow, and you start saving the money.
You're you're right, but when you're. You're, you're, you're right, but when you're not operating in the black, and your expenses are way over your revenues, until you reverse that, take your own household budget, take a business budget, take any other budget, it's the same concept. You can't, don't take this the wrong way. Little bit of Dave Ramsey here. If it's not bringing money in, it is a financial liability, no matter what it is. If it doesn't bring in money.
There goes the police and fire station.
Well, but that, but that's a little bit different. When, when your house is on fire, who's coming to do that? I mean, that, that's, that's more insurance than it is a liability. But what I'm just saying is, I, I would be all for, if we could put back three, four, or five million dollars in, in the bank account that is, that can be in our unallocated reserves, I would be all for taking a million of that and completely redoing that building and bringing it up to snuff and making it usable for the public. But the question is, is that gonna happen two years from now? Or are we gonna try to think six months ahead rather than, say, five years ahead? If we think five years ahead and say, what, how much money can we try to put back for that building? Or any other project that we might have that, again, may not bring money in, but it is a service to the public? I think we're being a little short-sighted, and we have buildings in operation that we have city employees using that need to be taken care of, and, I mean, am I, am I being unreasonable?
Well, I have, I have a rebuttal to that, and I also have a rebuttal to Charles, but I'll start with yours. First of all, you're cherry picking. If you wanna get down to the, to the nitty-gritty about in the black and the red, you're cherry picking on what you really want, how you really want to save money, because there's a lot of things that we're doing that we shouldn't be doing if we're in such a situation that you are in. Such as watching our spending, hiring, making sure that we're cutting a lot of stuff out, which we're not doing, and you know that.
Right, well, and I made a fuss about it. The last time, we wanted to spend ten, fifteen thousand dollars on temporary seasonal workers, but I agree with that completely.
So, so this council, and specifically in your particular case now, like I said, is cherry picking. There's certain things you care about when you wanna save money, and there are certain things you don't look at caring about.
There is. You gotta make, you have to weigh out.
But this isn't costing us any money. This is money we're setting aside. It's not like you're spending.
Well, I agree with that, but what I'm saying is, is if you have, if you have, if you have something like the Graham Community, what revenues come in from the Graham Community Building? Is there any revenue stream coming in, is the question?
We do get a revenue from it on rentals, but you know what? We would get a lot more rental revenue from it if it was fixed.
I agree, but is that going to fund our police department?
No, but the purpose of billing rentals isn't for funding the police department.
No, I agree, and hear me out. The reason we have, let's say, a library, or a park, or a community building, the PYO, any building like that is a service to the people that the people pay for that's not bringing in revenue. It is a service. It, it's a luxury, you could say. I'm not saying it's not good. They are good things. But when your budget is at the point of, like, why would we hire on a police officer if we're having, if we're having issues? Well, because public safety is our, is one of our core responsibilities. That is a core responsibility of a municipality is public safety. If we're not, if we're not keeping them staffed at least enough to keep the public safe, we're doing a disservice to people. But, and that's the same with the fire department, but when you're talking about these other departments that take money as opposed to make, bring in revenue, and they're not guaranteeing us a type of insurance, if you will, when, when your, when your revenues are not making up for your expenses.
I think there's a lot of revenues not making up for expenses right now.
I agree with that.
Overall, in other departments.
I, I agree with you. Here, they say, I agree with you, but here's the deal. It took the last three to five years to get us into this situation. That's why we're having this conversation.
We're having a conversation that was not my intent tonight. My intent is very simple. The general fund has been struggling for the last several years. It was struggling in twenty twenty two. We just didn't have the council with spine to step up and say it was struggling. We now have the council with that spine. We have an opportunity to put thirty thousand dollars back into that struggling general fund to take care of the facilities that our employees are using today. This building is leaking. We should not have city clerk employees sitting in this building worrying about leaks. If, if we're gonna fix the Graham Community Center, I'm all for it. Let's repair it, but let the EDTA do its job. I'm asking one simple thing. Write the account that this initially came out of, and let's just move on. Thirty thousand back into the general fund, general repair and maintenance account will help enormously with the repair and maintenance of our current facilities.
How much is in that account right now?
Thirty thousand less than should be there.
Now, how much is in that account? What's it gonna cost to fix this building? If you got these ideas, you gotta hit some.
Have we even attempted to, other than looking at the problem, have we actually went out and tried to acquire the work to get this building fixed? But also, the decision I thought we had made, I mean, I, there are good points on both sides, but the decision was made to allow the EDTA time to look at this and figure out what our best option was, and we're going to move money around within the council where there's not gonna be anything, even if there wasn't a decision to be made, there's not gonna be money left for them to do anything with.
It's a good point, because there is gonna be expenses that the EDTA is gonna have that they're gonna wanna get reimbursed from us as far as structural engineering, an architect, et cetera, to look at that building for what, what can be repaired on it. And to also, back to rebuttal, when I told you that I was gonna rebuttal to Charles after Councilman Rashir, was that we, well, you brought up another point, but the, the, the roof leaking in this building over here in this corner over here has been mentioned by the mayor ever since he took office, which was last fiscal year. What is being done to remedy this problem? Do we have a engineer's, I, I ask if a structural engineer was gonna look at it. I haven't seen a structural engineer report to tell us that we have a leaking problem.
Terry, I'm gonna have a rebuttal to you at that one, because we have filed two OMAG claims in that time. These claims are not filed and done in twenty-four hours. Sometimes they take several months. We've had adjusters come out to look at the roof. We've had, we've had roofing companies, local roofing, local, two of them come out to look. And again, further conversations with OMAG as recently as when OMAG went over to the police station to look at that roof that seems to pick and choose when it's gonna leak. Captain Trammell will, will attest to that with his office. We have a snowstorm, and the roof leaks like a sieve. Am I correct, couch? We have a, what they call a gully washer rainstorm, and it doesn't leak a drip. And we have another little light storm, and it drips. I will draw, I, I, I've, I've regretted doing this, but if everybody will look, our little black dot friend up here. You go into that hallway, there's, there's more brown dots and, and water stains and mud downstairs in their ladies' room, which if anybody has ever had the wrath of Terry Hill, have the wrath of Terry Hill while she is in that bathroom getting dripped on. I'll save you the, the humor. I'm not done. So, OMAG came out, and they rejected the claims and said that there was nothing, nothing that, that they could find related to any kind of storm or weather damage. So, as we went through this, we've asked other, other roofers to come out and look. They've come out, they've looked. They actually, at one of the point, one of our local roofers met the OMAG adjuster in the stairwell and realized that they were somehow related through a sister brother's wife's, cuz I don't know, I don't care, irrelevant. But then we went back a second time after the last set of windstorms last fall and tried again to get another claim on this roof because it started leaking again. At the same time, we had another adjuster come out, month ago, two months ago, maybe, to the police station. And I went every square inch of that building with him. Trammell was with us. We went through there. They, they got up in the roof, they looked, and again came back. Both of those denied, both of those claims were denied again. The next step was calling OMAG and finding out why our claims keep getting rejected. So now we're into less than a month ago. So to the nothing's been done campaign, shut that one down, which we're on it. The idea is, is that when we talk to OMAG, OMAG says to me, well, maybe it's in the full report. What full report are you talking about? Because the ones you emailed us, it just said denied. Well, it's the write-up from the adjuster that says where they found the problems. We just got those last week. So now, we're looking at the situation where, and again, we're gonna go back to the conversation about the street project, and the lowest bidder may not always be the best deal. This building, for those that don't know, was designed by Mr. Graver, who also designed the building across the street, both of which have the exact same problem with the roof. The exact same roof construct and the exact same problems throughout the buildings. We found issues in the walls when we had a leak one night in the middle of the night. Our janitor, Cindy, called and said, oh my gosh, there's water all over downstairs, and we can't find the water. To come in, and for those of you that know more about plumbing than I do, which is probably ninety percent of you, when you have a brass connection to a galvanized ninety, that galvanized is gonna bust a hole sooner or later, and those kind of plumbing fittings were all through this building and all through the building across the street. All of which problems precursor just about everybody on this council. Just about. So what we've gotta do is then figure out where we're gonna find the money to make these little repairs that literally pop up in the middle of the night, or show up out of nowhere. You go to the north side, or the west side of the building, and you look up at the, what would typically be the fascia, and you can see the rust coming out from there, to which I have said many, many times, we've got to figure that out. You and I walked that.
Exactly.
We looked at that. To find out that there's other reports gives us a new direction to go, and that's where we're at. So now it's a matter of assessing those reports and getting in and finding out what the leak is and why these buildings are leaking. But again, we, we went with a bidder that wasn't probably the best scenario for the city, and now we have a problem. So here we are, trying to address that problem, and these things can't be addressed overnight, as much as we would love to be. So what we've got to do is, instead of sitting here bellyaching back and forth about where we're gonna put money, what we're gonna do, we need to realize our current city hall that we are using has a roof problem, and we have more than once had to replace drywall and ceiling tiles downstairs in mud.
Can I?
Yeah.
Are, I don't want to cut you.
I'm almost done, but go ahead.
This is a capital project, yes?
Correct.
So why are we talking about taking a general fund money that we're trying to keep full with something that we should be taking from capital?
That's exactly what I was just writing down as we were talking. Is this something that maybe the budget committee can look at before the next meeting?
It needs to be looked at.
And capital monies, and doing that, and then to Tyler's point, I just wanted to say, I mean, we did just ask EDTA to look into that. Maybe we sit on this for a little bit.
Where I'm at. I'm not saying I'm a kid.
And then look at moving some capital money. I mean, I just, I literally just wrote that down.
But I just wanna, I just wanna throw this out there. Even in Mr. Lamar's conversation with me outside building, this was addressed as a capital issue. We need to allocate capital funds to fix the roof. Anybody put a roof on their house lately?
It's expensive.
Very expensive.
Right? So, yes, I recognize this is a capital expense, but plumbing fittings that are bursting in the, in the wall in the middle of the night, or an elevator that doesn't go up, or the last one was an elevator that sank a foot while it was on the ground floor. Those are things we have to fix immediately.
And the door on the elevator sitting there going back and forth.
I would, I would still ask the question I had answered yet. How much money have we got in that maintenance account?
I was in the middle of pulling it up, and I got distracted.
Thirty thousand savings or?
I wanna, while you're looking that up, I wanna say something. I know previous administration, they talked about fixing the swimming pool, getting an engineer. We spent eighty-six thousand dollars on that. My question was, do we have the funds to fix the pool if the engineer comes up, oh, yeah, 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 guess what? We wasted eighty-six thousand dollars. We were also told, and I forget who told us, that they thought the PYO building was sound enough that it was wise to put a roof on there. So we spent the money to put the roof, and it didn't happen. I do not know if it's economically feasible, possible, or wise to save the Graham building or not. That's what we're waiting to hear from. I would like to see us hold this money until we know that. I don't wanna put it somewheres, and then we find out we can fix the Graham building, and we want to, and we don't have the funds. But at the same time, I don't wanna throw money in a building if it can't be fixed. And that's just kinda where I stand, so I'm, I'm for, to wait.
Well, I, I think I'm the same agreeing with him. Reverend Kinnon, he's, he's headed the right way. The discussion he's having, but the problem, or the, the answer, I guess, will wait for EDTA to see if it's feasible or not feasible.
Where's the thirty thousand sitting right now? Where, where do we invest it? What accounts is this?
Capital account, if I remember right. Yes, it's in, it's in a capital account. Twelve, one thirty-three is your answer.
Ms. Coats was here that night. Ms. Coats might.
One thirty-three.
Hundred and thirty-three? Dollars? Thousand? Bucks?
Bruce, twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty-three.
Okay, so we're not broke yet. We can buy fittings out of that, I'm sure.
Quinn had a question about where it was earmarked. I'm sure she can tell us.
Yeah.
Did they not have a prom in that?
They did just have to do a freshman prom.
So again, all I'm doing is I'm trying to, we, we have nickel and dimed this general fund account trying to save every tenth of a penny. And we have an opportunity to put thirty thousand back in there to make it healthier. Not make it completely healthy, but to make it healthier. That's all I'm asking.
As we've proven many times, if it's in there, we'll spend it. If we don't earmark it and hide it until we see what the Graham building's gonna do.
Well, that's what that account is for. It's, that's what that account is for. When you have a brass fitting
But it's not earmarked.
On the side of a wall, that's, that, it has to go somewhere. I mean, that's what it's for.
And if they buy a brass fitting, we don't have to have thirty thousand to make any difference in this.
Okay. Anyway.
Let's call for the vote.
Why don't we table it until we get to EDTA's?
When is EDTA gonna come in? Have we heard anything?
They, no, and they met yesterday. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? And it was not even on their agenda, so obviously.
It was on their last agenda?
Pardon?
They've already, they've already discussed that.
Yes, I was present at that meeting. I'm saying that a month later at the meeting that they had yesterday, they, it was not on their agenda, so.
No, because they're not prepared to give an answer yet, so I have full faith when they are ready, they will give that answer.
So is the vote, yes, is to move it to the O two, two oh one account?
Well, right now, it would be as stated.
Okay.
You don't have any other motion to change that.
Okay.
Or to table it?
That would require changing the motions.
How long can you table forever?
When we table it, it has to come back to the next.
Or no action.
Oh, no action.
Do no action.
So we can't ta, we can't even say to table it till EDTA brings?
Usually, when you do a table, you say, well.
You have to say the actual thing.
I would recommend no action.
But no action.
So who made the motion second, and the mayor recommends a no action?
Rashirz?
Yep, I'll make the second. No action.
To pursue some changes?
Yeah, we'll go with no action at this time.
Rashirz?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
No.
Dante?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shawshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna skip a few on this mayor's report. We're gonna go to item F. Discussion of possible action regarding an expenditure in the amount of thirteen thousand, eight seventy-seven and fifty cents to HCC Tactical for ten, I'm guessing Cayman ballistic helmets, RG, FG, MD, LMOP, and five Cayman helmet covers to be paid from police miscellaneous account nine six, nine six five 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 oh two. The police department was awarded the twenty twenty-five OK Safe Grant in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred, which will reimburse this purchase to police miscellaneous account nine six, nine six five. Did I just repeat that line? I'm apologize. Police Department was awarded the, the twenty twenty-five OK Safe Grant in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred, which will reimburse this purchase to the police miscellaneous account nine six, nine six five five. which will reimburse this purchase to the police miscellaneous account nine six, nine six five 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 oh two. Other bids received, own the night in the amount of thirteen thousand seven fifty, helmets only, and Galvian Tactical in the amount of fourteen thousand one twenty and eighty cents.
So move.
Motion from Gauthier?
I'll second.
Second from Tua.
So this was a grant that we wrote, uh, earlier, starting last year when it comes out. You know, the grant period's open, and this is what we wrote it for. Um, we were awarded the grant. It's been confirmed. We do have the grant. She said purchase, and they'll reimburse a hundred percent. Um, the, the one that we, the, um, one that we're going with actually was lower than that, but the amount that we were awarded was more. Um, so they threw in the covers as well with that, um, in order to make up some of that difference, that four hundred and seventy-five dollars, so. Um, they're all the same brand of helmet with the, through each company.
What are these for?
Just ballistic helmets, so any type of scenario that you would get in. If there's shooting or something, um, certain officers could have them, or if they go on a warrant, they would have the helmets.
Okay, I got you. Do you have any now?
No. Some guys have actually purchased on their own, I believe, but not department issue.
Well, you can't, how much is free?
Jeremy, I've got two questions for you. Is this, was the, you said bids were received. Was this done in accordance with the new city bidding, bidding procedure? That we enacted here a couple of months ago?
Correct. Yes, I did three bids is what we announced.
And were they advertised in the newspaper, or how were they advertised for bidding?
They're all government pricing, so there's not, companies don't sell that unless they're government entities, so they're all government retailers. And that's called G S A pricing, is what it's called, um, which is government rates that they get.
Right. So is that an exemption in our bidding policy that it's a government deal? It's?
It's not state contract, but it's government.
In our, 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 the policy doesn't say state contract. It says state or government or something.
But it doesn't have to be advertised?
No.
No.
Okay.
And didn't you say this happened a while back?
When the grant was written. So you, you write the grants for a specific purpose, and then you get the awards. It was held up with the federal funding and stuff, but it's been since released and awarded.
Thank you. Call for the vote?
Brown.
I'm gonna abstain.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shawshire?
Yes.
Redshaw? Yes. Frashiers?
Yes.
Okay. Item G, discussion on possible action to approve the mayor's appointment of Darla Coats to fill a vacant position as assistant city clerk for the city of Prior Creek.
Motion.
Range F, step four.
Oh!
Fifty-eight thousand.
Put my glasses on.
Six fifty-six, effective May fifth, twenty twenty-five. We have a motion for a toy.
I'll say.
And a second from, I'm gonna give it to him because he raised his hand. From Lamar. Discussion. Call for the vote.
Trammell?
Actually, that was a quick call for the vote. I had a discussion, but.
Oh.
No.
Then we can call back if you wanna talk.
Move on. No.
Gauthier?
This is a hard one for me. Uh, I'm gonna abstain on this one. I, I have a strong feeling.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shawshire?
Yes.
Redshaw?
Yes.
Frashiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So before we move on, can I point something out? Um, and Darla, my, that was nothing against you. It was the fact that we rushed the vote.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to. I thought that there was no discussion. I apologize.
That, that, that's fine. It seems like we're, you know, there's three council members up here who will break their neck to scream out motion. And Councilman Lamar rightfully several months ago pointed out that we need to be careful on how we call those motions and repeat how we are, what motion we are actually making. And we have slipped from that. The objective in these city council meetings is not to be the first to call a motion, not to be the first to scream out a second, but it's to be very strategic in how we're approaching these motions. And I'd remind everyone to do that. And then I would also remind everyone that there needs to be a, a valid discussion here. This discussion I was going to have is about not the assist, Darla as assistant city clerk, but whether we even needed an assistant city clerk position going forward, and whether we needed to to have a discussion on that position before we promoted someone into it that we may turn around and eliminate that position down the road, given the, the actions we have taken recently for, for the outsourcing the payroll. And I think we need a balance, I mean, you know, we need to relook that balance, but it is what it is. Again, Darla, that was in no way a no vote against you. That was a no vote against just the way we rushed this tonight.
The same with me. I have, uh.
Pointing where? Let's move on. Okay. Item H, discussion on possible action regarding the use of city-owned vehicles and equipment requested by Brown, Smith, and Gauthier.
Motion is stated.
So. I have a motion for Brown. And a second from Frashier. Discussion.
Our current city policy does not allow for personal use of city-owned vehicles or equipment. And I think that we need to make sure that that's very clear with what our employees of what personal use is. So that there's, or we need to discuss changing the ordinance, one way or the other. Um, so I, I, I think that that can probably be handled through the department head level, but I think that it needs to be discussed, and I believe our attorney would tell you that it's de minimis, and personal use is personal use.
Yeah, so you've got your ordinance. Um, you've also got your city policy, which I don't wanna say contradicts your ordinance, but expands on it to where, uh, the mayor can approve any prior creed vehicles being driven home by employees. That's not an ordinance. That's in your policy book. It does say it has to, you know, fall under the IRS de minimis and all of that. If anybody's committing tax fraud, that's on them, I guess, not us, but. But that's, I don't wanna say exception. It expands the ordinance, so the mayor kind of has to say. And then each department head needs to identify any vehicles that aren't being driven.
Well, this discussion actually is policemen, is where we're at right now, driving the city vehicle to their second job. What's the liability to the city if there's a problem there? If they're using city equipment, city.
I think anytime that city equipment, vehicle, whatever is being used, whenever, wherever, I think there's an issue, why would they?
And that's not picking on the police department. We've had discussions with this plane, type on two other departments for it.
I'm assuming that the way everything is stated, they should not be using city of prior anything with a job that's outside of the scope of, of, of the city. That would be security. Now, it's different if, if they're, you know, they're going to the school for a game because we have a relationship there. If we have a Rock Mahoma or whatever, there's a relationship there. That's, that's different. It's the ones that's totally outside the bounds of a relationship with the city, their second job.
I, I don't think it's different if they're not, if the city's not reimbursing or the city's not paying them. I, I think it's not the same. And I don't think it's just for the police. I think it's for anybody in the city that is using a personal car or a city-owned vehicle for personal use, whether that means you're going to the feed store or anything else. I think if it's personal use, it's personal use, and it's not city use. It's not the same as I need to stop by Beggs on my way through town. That is not, that is not what this is about. I, I think, I, I don't know why we have to dumb down how far personal use is, um, but personal use is personal use.
So we've had this conversation before with Chase.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's exactly what it says. You take your ordinance, and you can expand on it with your policy, which is the mayor can say you can take it home. Even under the policy, if he says that, it's still not supposed to be used for personal use. It's just take it. Didn't let you get the bags far as he's a good example. You gotta do something on my way home.
Well, also tying this to mayor's truck. I don't know why he's driving a truck. Where'd you get the authority to start commandeering a police vehicle with emergency lights and siren to make it your truck? How'd that happen?
Well.
We're supposed to be saving money, and you're not saving money doing that.
The truck that I had, let me be clear on this. The truck that I had, we passed on the park.
You wouldn't authorize that either. That's another one you commandeered. You commandeered two now. And I don't know why we're making police officers leave their vehicles at home to save money, and you commandeered a truck and driving all over town.
Well, the council had-
Well, nothing.
Bruce? Council had approved the use of the vehicle.
When did that happen?
Oh, that was right after we took office, sir.
I think you make enough money, you can afford to drive your own vehicle. You make ninety-seven thousand a year, and the mayor council makes a hundred and five? They're a little imbalanced. Drive your own vehicle, park that truck, and let go buddy where he needs it. You don't need to pray around and truck emergency vehicle lights on them.
Well.
Unmarked, black windows.
I appreciate that you're, you're bringing up the lights and siren. That's not anything I have any concern with, nor do I care to have any concern with those lights and sirens.
He said not in that truck?
Have we not discussed getting those removed at first opportunity?
Yeah, but they're not, they're in there right now. You're driving. You can't drive emergency vehicle not authorized.
Bruce, I'm not, I'm not using them. I don't care to use them. There's no notification.
That's just like you'll drive a car trip. You can drive it, you can drive it.
Okay.
So I guess.
To, to clarify Bruce's question right there to the chief just now, what is, you, you said that was discussed, so is it in the process of being removed, and when is it gonna be done?
There's no law that says you can't drive one. You can't act as a police officer, but you can put any lights you want to in radio in a car. That says you can't, so that's not true. And then, yes, we're gonna remove them out of there.
What did I mention it though?
I don't know. It's been, it's been talked about.
But the same thing, your men, we're making your men leave their cars at home to save money, but we're letting the mayor take off and drive wherever he wants to. With an unmarked car with black windows in it.
Well, I've used that vehicle for city purposes only, and I do not, if I go, if I, unless like today I went to a meeting out of town, I do not drive that vehicle out of the city.
I don't know how you're gonna drive your own and let buddy have a heathens vehicle. I'd make a motion. I can make a motion. That's not anything.
No.
So, I guess my, my question is to Tyler, is what is the, what, what outcome are you looking for? Are you wanting the city council to establish some type of policy tonight? Are you wanting to just direct the department heads to do something? I'm a little confused on it. What do I have to?
Definitely discuss with the department head.
I just think that there was, there's some discussions that can be had at the department head level about this, so that the issue resolves itself, and that, but I don't, I, I don't know that we need to take action specifically tonight.
Okay.
But I think the citizens should be aware that we're paying attention to what's going on and that we're trying to be on top of it.
For about saving money, we figured out a way to do that. Now, are we gonna continue to let drivers take their jobs, and we're gonna continue to let the mayor drive his, whatever he wants to do? So how are we gonna do that?
I, I, be, my understanding from the policy, that if they're working a job for the personal, it's not being reimbursed by the city, it's a personal job.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that would be covered under the policy.
So I think it can be handled at the lowest level possible for now unless it's a continued issue. Let it go through the proper.
So Chase is saying that it's improper to drive a city vehicle to their second part-time job? Unless it's under purview of a city business.
For personal?
Right, right. And, and so he's, he's told us, he's told us it's not proper. And Tyler is wanting to let this go to the department head level, that they should be made aware of this and handled at the department head level to tell them, you can't do this. Is that what your all's intent is?
Yes.
And, and I agree with that approach. I do have one question for clarification. Is there a point at which when somebody's using these vehicles where we have to deal with ten ninety-nine or something like that? Or it's considering some kind of compensation, they're probably supposed to report it or something like that?
Mayor, you couldn't deny that?
Yeah, I think your boss even has.
I think he's saying if it's personal use.
It's for your gain, but you, I think you have to tell that it, ten ninety-nine, hit the last pick up and he gets mileage and turning it in again. Good time that R S find out.
Yeah, whatever the IRS, the John Natax guy, I think the IRS code kicks in with taxation. Answer to that. I would assume that means ten ninety-nine, not your tax.
So is that done through your employer? If you have a city vehicle and you're driving it, it should be done through the employer with the tax stuff with your payroll?
Exactly. Qualification on every answer regarding taxes, I have not your tax.
Okay.
So to, to be clear, I'm not necessarily all, that is not all that I'm saying. Um, I'm also saying that the ordinance could be changed, um, because I think that there could be instances where if somebody is working an entire shift and goes directly from that shift to a job within the city, I'm, I'm not sure that that's not still de minimis use, because there would have taken that car from somewhere, from A to B at that point also. So I, I, yeah, I, I think that there are circumstances that depend on what's going on with somebody on a day off, and then they use that vehicle to go work, or where they already at work and on their, travels home, would have been working a part-time job anyway. I think one is de minimis and one is not.
Right, and that's why, that's, that's a better way of what I was trying to say. That's why I kind of brought it off when you were giving an example, is that personal use. Because I, I don't think you wanna say each individual act of whatever is a violation, it's, is at personal use, and I think every single act can be looked at as.
Would you agree it's de minimis if they're already at work? And then they go some, somewhere in town already, they would be? For those that.
I would agree.
But just in case those who don't know, what is de minimis?
De minimis?
Minimum.
Far as the IRS.
As far as the IRS code.
I think when you gave it to us last time, it was a hundred.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
This is gonna be little usage out of why. Great, it's not in the roster section. Backing significance or importance? So minor is to merit disregard.
But as far as the IRS is concerned, that's, if I, if, if I take a, I work at the P D and I gotta stop my homeland on the way home, grab a couple of things and go home. Yeah, but if I'm.
You're not, you as an IRS agent.
Yeah, but, but if, if I work at the P D and then I drive over to Salina to go work a second job, and then I come back to Prior and go home from, with that vehicle, that's, that's personal use. That would.
It's supposed to be an issue.
Yeah. So I think we could probably just make a motion for no action on this, and if there's any issues at the department head or in the departments, the department heads can take care of it for now, unless it continues to be an issue, and we can take appropriate action then.
Further discussion? Call for the vote?
Well, do we need to? It just says discussion on possible action. If his motion is as stated, which was the, the possible action was leave it to the department heads.
We want to change that to no action.
I'll make a motion for no action.
We had the motion in the second.
Brown and Frashiers.
Okay, we can make a motion for no action.
What were you gonna?
We were leaving it with the department heads, which is essentially no action.
No action from the council.
Yeah. Either way, I think we were fine, I guess, as.
What do you agree on? Because the department head is going to instruct them not to drive it to the job or not, or?
Well, just gonna use, instruct them not to use it for personal use. If there's a current issue, we can let it be handled at the lowest level possible, and then if it continues to be an issue, then we can handle it here.
Well, regardless, it's either lawful or not lawful to drive a city vehicle to the second job.
Right.
Not to the store, not to the bakery, not in those states. That's the liability we're talking about. If we take no action, at least we all know that when we get sued.
The motion has been changed to no action, so.
And just, just remember, it does say and equipment, so like, want more of those stuff too.
Okay, we've got.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Lamar?
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Redshaw? Yes. Reshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Camel?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll just-
Discussion impossible action regarding the marking of city-owned vehicles and equipment requested by-
I think the motion that all city-owned vehicles and equipment be marked unless it's needed for like the police department or something to not be marked.
By Brown, Smith, and Gantier. You wanna try that again?
Same thing as I said.
We have a motion from Gantier.
I'll second.
I have a question for Councilman-
Second, who is the second?
I have a question for Councilman, uh, Chris.
Yes, sir.
In your motion, was I, was you clear or unclear that you're saying that all vehicles shall be marked with the exception of police department?
Some, like, like the detectives undercover such as that. There are some vehicles within like maybe the police department that need to be unmarked.
The only way it should really be is detectives, they've got legitimate reach and not to be marked. All others should have markings on them, they need people to see it. There's no reason if you're having a police vehicle not to mark it, except the detective, that's legitimate.
What, what police vehicles would you say?
The ones that aren't marked right now are the administrative vehicles, because they're not patrol vehicles, uh, the detective vehicles. Everything else is marked.
What's administrative vehicles?
Me, says the chief and captain.
Why not take mark?
Because I don't feel they should be, I mean, just-
Well, why, there's police vehicles, you need police presence, you're out-
We're not out on patrol, Bruce, we're in-
You're not sure if it's seen and it's a go zone?
I think this would be a, just a general marking.
I mean, we could spend a thousand dollars more each unit, I don't care if you wanna mark everything. Whatever you wanna do, it's not spending money.
You have police presence, now in the city, you don't, I don't know-
I think it's a, man, you know, the department head can make that decision. And I'm for marked vehicles. I'm not against marked vehicles. I mean, every vehicle has marked except the ones that-
Now, do you think detectives is legitimate? I don't think that either, because they've got a reason not to be.
Well, isn't it, isn't, my understanding of the discussion was generally for all city vehicles just to be marked? That it is city of Pryor Creek? Not specifically towards one department, but just in general, unless it's a-
That's accurate. And my question would be, what is not marked in the city?
Yeah.
So, your policy already is all city vehicles shall be clearly marked as such except unmarked police cars.
So everything should be marked already? Okay.
And of course, that can, that can be as simple as buying some decals and just get it straight and-
This is not police vehicles. This is our lawn mowers, our backhoes, our rolling stock, be marked city of Pryor. And if the mayor keeps his, he's gonna mark his.
Your, your policy only covers vehicles, but you can obviously do that.
We can mark everything, that is not a problem.
I like the idea of having equipment marked, because we've had instances where Pryor Creek, not recently, but Pryor Creek equipment was used for personal use. Whereas if they're gonna be mowing a yard or something and they got that sticker on there, then it's, they just, it's not so easy to get away with doing stuff like that. And to keep city equipment for city use, that's my contention.
So, is that something we want to, what action are we gonna make as far as, we're just gonna leave it to the department heads to get that done? And spend the few dollars at the, at the store to, whether it's just get some of the decals or get some spray paint and some stencils or something? Or what do you?
I think we, I've had this discussion with the mayor two, three times, wouldn't have brought it up, but he kept pushing aside not paying attention. We've got, every department's got a marker that put on their vehicle to say it's park department, street department, whatever. Police, we got the police department. Mayor, put mayor on it if he keeps it.
Absolutely. We've talked-
That's what it's all about, it's murder-
Well, last time we had this conversation, your call, it was we had the truck at the golf course. And that, that's been marked, Buddy's new truck's been marked. So as we've been going, we've tried to stay on it. I, I don't have any problem. You guys want marks on, vinyls are cheap anymore and they're easy to do. Um, and weather grade vinyls can be made by just about anybody with a cricket. But we can, I mean, you want it on mowers and backhoes? We'll put it on mowers and backhoes.
I think the citizens and taxpayers have the right to know what and where their vehicles are at and who's got what you're doing with them. No mark in this way, these are doing.
Would it be prudent just to add an equipment to the, the, whatever you read just a minute ago?
Um, yeah, I'd do it in a different portion of your policy. So that, that portion I just read to you specifically had your city-owned vehicle use and the community got approval. So there's, I'd have to go through, it'd probably be better placed to put it marking, just because of the specific section on vehicles or vehicles.
So, right.
Does the city have its own standard marking?
It would probably be this-
Like the stickers that the police, that the street department has and the-
Correct. If it were something specific like the street department or, you know, the police department. Um, I think parks and golf have got theirs. It would just be the city crest.
Isn't that what's on Kenny's truck?
Yes.
Yes, it's on a window.
Yeah. That's what I was envisioning.
Just a six, eight inch city crest.
So, or it could be the, well, the simple sticker that like Buddy's got, says Pryor Street Department, it's Pryor Park Department, et cetera. But a standard, and those are probably, they probably obtain those probably from premier signs like everything else in the town.
Somewhere, who knows? And like I said, they can be made anywhere. No, it's just, we'll get some purchase though, I'm on them.
So Councilman Smith, do you and Councilman Brown and Councilman Gantier have a, a deadline that you would want this done by?
We could start in the process tonight, tomorrow, whenever the mayor decides to issue it, we have to do it.
To, to be clear, I think when any of us sign on to this, it's not necessarily that we wholeheartedly agree with what the motion is. We agree with the ability to have the discussion on it. So, when you're asking me my opinion, I haven't even voiced up on this very often for you to know where I stand on it.
Okay.
I just wanna have the discussion.
Fair enough. Part of the discussion I would think is including, when do we wanna have this done by and who's gonna direct it?
Well, if the council votes for it, we'll get started on it.
I think the policy's already there.
Yeah, we already have a policy, so.
That's kinda what I'm saying, we want to add vehi- equipment? We just take our inventory and we'll see how many we need.
I mean, a motion tonight can change policy.
Yeah, I just don't know where, uh, but I do want it to be clear. When we're talking about equipment, we're not talking about hammers and screwdrivers. We're talking about like-
Rolling stock.
Yeah, things like lawn mowers, backhoes, things like that, I don't, I mean-
Weed eaters?
You can get, yeah, you can get, you can go too far with it as well. I just, what's reasonable for people that need, they need to know. Especially a, a gas powered or electric powered something that could be a liability if somebody got hurt and they were using city equipment on a non-city project.
I would prefer if somebody got hurt, they not know it was ours, but- I guarantee you they'll find out. Well, they shouldn't be using it. If they're not using it, if they get hurt, they're not authorized. From a structural, those-
Do you have any more discussion on that? Call for the vote.
Well, what's the-
Smith?
Okay.
Here.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Redshaw? Yes. Reshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Camel?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
All right. We're gonna go ahead and skip down to the city attorney's report, item F. So that we can get on with the other parts of this where people are actually waiting to-
Can we do G?
G.
What do we got on the G? You said F, which is-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
P. If we do G, that's what people are waiting on.
Yes, I'm sorry, G. I, I marked one, one, two I. Uh, possible executive session concerning the employment hiring, appointment promotion to motion discipline. Ding, or resignation of, based on twenty-five OS three oh seven B one, Bryce Brute, police dispatcher. Jimmy Lemmons, reserve officer, and Kiara Jones, reserve officer.
I'll move the motion.
So. A motion from Gantier and a second from Reshears. We'll call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Redshaw? Yes. Reshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Camel?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
We'll be back.
Okay, let's go back to H. All right. Uh, sorry, item H, consider resuming regular session. No action taken during executive session.
So moved.
Motion from Gantier.
Second.
Second from Rasheers. Call for the vote.
Shropshire.
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Item I, possible action based on executive session concerning the employment, hiring, promotion, demotion, disciplining, resignation of Bryce Brute, Jimmy Lemons, and Kiara Jones.
I have a question. And maybe you guys answered this, but are we taking no action on this and going to go to C, D, and E instead?
Yes, that's probably the best way to handle that.
Okay.
So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion for no action.
Second.
And a motion for no action from Rasheers and a second from Brown. Call for the vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
At this point, we will go, um, hang on, let me see what some company to do.
Four C.
Item report.
Let's go to item four C. Thank you. Discussion, possible action to hire Bryce Brute as Prior, Prior Police, uh, Prior Creek Police Dispatcher, Range R, Step One, thirty-seven, three sixty-three, with start date of five, twelve, twenty-five, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Ciara Brown.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Bradshaw and a second from Choya. Discussion.
I have a question. How are we gonna have Facebook covered on fire emergency calls if you were?
So actually, I have a friend that's gonna help me out.
Okay, I knew you'd have it.
Yeah, yes, sir.
He's got a backup.
Okay. There's no further, we will call for the vote.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
At this point, we will go, um, hang on, let me see what some company to do.
Four C.
Item report.
Item C. Let's go to item four C. Thank you. Discussion, possible action to hire Bryce Brute as Prior, Prior Police, Prior Creek Police Dispatcher, Range R, Step One, thirty-seven, three sixty-three, with start date of five, twelve, twenty-five, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Ciara Brown.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Bradshaw and a second from Choya. Discussion.
I have a question. How are we gonna have Facebook covered on fire emergency calls if you were?
So actually, I have a friend that's gonna help me out.
Okay, I knew you'd have it.
Yeah, yes, sir.
He's got a backup.
Okay. There's no further, we will call for the vote.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Okay.
He's also here, so congratulations, Dan.
Congratulations.
All right, discussion, impossible action to hire Kiara Jones as a reserve officer with Prior Creek Police Department effective April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Kevin Philbin. Jones is a paramedic and reserve certified.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Gantier and a second from Rasheers. And a discussion. Okay, call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
At this point, we will go, um, hang on, let me see what some company to do.
Four C.
Item report.
Item C. Let's go to item four C. Thank you. Discussion, possible action to hire Bryce Brute as Prior, Prior Police, Prior Creek Police Dispatcher, Range R, Step One, thirty-seven, three sixty-three, with start date of five, twelve, twenty-five, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Ciara Brown.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Bradshaw and a second from Choya. Discussion.
I have a question. How are we gonna have Facebook covered on fire emergency calls if you were?
So actually, I have a friend that's gonna help me out.
Okay, I knew you'd have it.
Yeah, yes, sir.
He's got a backup.
Okay. There's no further, we will call for the vote.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
At this point, we will go, um, hang on, let me see what some company to do.
Four C.
Item report.
Item C. Let's go to item four C. Thank you. Discussion, possible action to hire Bryce Brute as Prior, Prior Police, Prior Creek Police Dispatcher, Range R, Step One, thirty-seven, three sixty-three, with start date of five, twelve, twenty-five, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Ciara Brown.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Bradshaw and a second from Choya. Discussion.
I have a question. How are we gonna have Facebook covered on fire emergency calls if you were?
So actually, I have a friend that's gonna help me out.
Okay, I knew you'd have it.
Yeah, yes, sir.
He's got a backup.
Okay. There's no further, we will call for the vote.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
At this point, we will go back down to item five A in the city attorney's report. Possible executive session pursued to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communications with attorney regarding a, uh, actually, I'm gonna stop. Let's go to the addendum. Um, let's put an addendum on this one first. Uh, possible executive session concerning the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline, or resignation of base twenty-five O S three oh seven B one, Megan Gilipsy as municipal payroll clerk.
Motion.
We have a motion from Shropshire.
Second.
Second from Gantier. Call for the vote.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
At this point, we will go, um, hang on, let me see what some company to do.
Four C.
Item report.
Item C. Let's go to item four C. Thank you. Discussion, possible action to hire Bryce Brute as Prior, Prior Police, Prior Creek Police Dispatcher, Range R, Step One, thirty-seven, three sixty-three, with start date of five, twelve, twenty-five, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Ciara Brown.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Gantier and a second from Rasheers. And a discussion. Okay, call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
At this point, we will go, um, hang on, let me see what some company to do.
Four C.
Item report.
Item C. Let's go to item four C. Thank you. Discussion, possible action to hire Bryce Brute as Prior, Prior Police, Prior Creek Police Dispatcher, Range R, Step One, thirty-seven, three sixty-three, with start date of five, twelve, twenty-five, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Ciara Brown.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Bradshaw and a second from Choya. Discussion.
I have a question. How are we gonna have Facebook covered on fire emergency calls if you were?
So actually, I have a friend that's gonna help me out.
Okay, I knew you'd have it.
Yeah, yes, sir.
He's got a backup.
Okay. There's no further, we will call for the vote.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
At this point, we will go, um, hang on, let me see what some company to do.
Four C.
Item report.
Item C. Let's go to item four C. Thank you. Discussion, possible action to hire Bryce Brute as Prior, Prior Police, Prior Creek Police Dispatcher, Range R, Step One, thirty-seven, three sixty-three, with start date of five, twelve, twenty-five, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Ciara Brown.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Bradshaw and a second from Choya. Discussion.
I have a question. How are we gonna have Facebook covered on fire emergency calls if you were?
So actually, I have a friend that's gonna help me out.
Okay, I knew you'd have it.
Yeah, yes, sir.
He's got a backup.
Okay. There's no further, we will call for the vote.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Okay.
He's also here, so congratulations, Dan.
Congratulations.
All right, discussion, impossible action to hire Kiara Jones as a reserve officer with Prior Creek Police Department effective April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Kevin Philbin. Jones is a paramedic and reserve certified.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Gantier and a second from Rasheers. And a discussion. Okay, call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashir?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay, at this point, we're gonna go back down to item 5A in the city attorney's report. Possible executive session pursued to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communications with attorney regarding a... Actually, I'm gonna stop. Let's go to the addendum. Let's put an addendum on this one first. Possible executive session concerning the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, dissonance, or resignation of, based 250 S 307 B1, Megan Gillette, the as a municipal payroll clerk. Motion. We have a motion from Shropshire.
Second.
Second from Gantier. Call for the move.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashir?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
They were asking the questions.
I'm okay with you having to do it.
Okay. Are we on? Okay, item B, consider resuming a regular session. No action taken during executive session.
Motion.
Second.
The motion from Shropshire, second from Gantier. We call for the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Shears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lamont?
Yes.
Yes.
Item C, possible action based on executive session concerning the employment hiring, employment promotion to motion discipline resignation of Megan Gillespie, municipal clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve the hiring of Megan Gillespie.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Carrie Lamar, and second from Shropshire.
I do have a question of the clerk, though. What's the effective date of hire and what step and range?
Okay.
At least on the addendum, I don't see it on there.
As approved for the position previously, we were approved to put her in whoever was hired in range E.
E?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Step one was forty-one, five, eight.
Say the number again.
Let me get this right. I'm gonna say wrong. Forty-one thousand five hundred eighty.
Okay.
Step one.
An effective when?
Payroll, beginning of the next payroll.
It'd be the fifteenth.
Same as the police dispatcher one?
Yes.
That was the fifteenth, I did it right.
Sixteen. April, no, no, no.
Twelve of May.
Oh, twelve is the...
No, twelve.
Yeah.
I would also ask that this was listed as payroll clerk because that's what we approved for applications for, but I do think that, I'm not sure if that's the most appropriate title for what this position is. Is there a better title that would fit?
Deputy clerk.
Deputy clerk.
Thank you.
So will you be agreeable to...
Yes.
Change the motion to meet the deputy clerk?
To change that to deputy clerk in effective twelve May at range E, step one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Forty-one, five, eight.
So I have, are we open for discussion? So in a matter of transparency, I think that we should be very clear with the public about what we're about to vote on is an employee for the city clerk's office. The city did enter into a contract to do payroll. This employee will assist with that, but will also be assisting with other duties, as what we have discussed. So whenever I go look somebody in the eye and they say, "Why did you buy, pay for a payroll system and also hire a payroll clerk?", I, I don't feel like that's what I'm voting for. I feel like I'm voting for somebody that is going to be helping the city clerk's office. And I think I should also be very clear in saying that the city clerk's office, if the entire city is a wheel, the city clerk's office is the spoke. I'm sorry, the hub, and the rest are all spokes that come off of it, and they keep this place going round and round. We one hundred percent have got to buckle down on our budget. That is, I see three department heads in here right now, that is to you guys, but you guys can't function without city clerk's office, no doubt. So, that being said, yep, we, we may approve to spend some money tonight. But it's gonna take the entire city to keep the wheels on the bus from everybody going broke, and the city clerk's office has got to be in the middle of all of that to make sure everything keeps going down the road. I've said my piece now.
I have no problem with the city clerk getting help. The problem I had is we agreed to hire a company to do that. Now we've agreed to hire somebody to help the company. Dipping out of the well does not fill it up. It's a good spook, I know the thought, the fleet department is important. Everybody's important, which is two little things talking about. And it was suggested that we see if this company can help her and take the load off of her, but if we don't give them a chance to just hire somebody else, we have accomplished a lot of spinning money.
I think time would give us more time to be able to assess the situation as well as right now. If all this is coming out of the general budget, that's problematic. It's a funding issue, not a desire to help or have personnel.
Mayor, may I approach?
Sure. I will allow you to approach.
Oh, no, I was scratching my, I'm sorry.
I will allow you to approach.
I understand where you gentlemen are coming from, but you don't understand, somebody's got to get this paperwork to that company. There is gonna be a great deal of stuff that that company is gonna do for us, but we have to have somebody in our office who deals with the employees, who deals with workers' comp, who deals with insurance, all of these things that the employees need someone to speak to and to speak with and to help with, and then get that information to that company who's gonna then do their very large job, that they're, they're taking the bulk of what we're doing, but we have to have a middle person. We have to have a middle woman, if you will. We can't, you know what? When I came into AP, I thought, why do I have to put these invoices in here? Well, you know what? If I don't do it, who's gonna do it? There are steps to everything, and there's gotta be somebody, a human being, to do it. And if you guys don't get us some help, we are drowning in that office. And I am, I understand that there is a budget crunch, that's all I hear, but if you've spent a day or a week in our office, you would know not one of us can complete our actual jobs because we have so many other things that we are trying to do, and Hannah has been here since January and has yet to do the job she was elected to do because she does not have time to learn her own stinking job. We, we are drowning, and I don't know how on earth, especially as long as that executive session just was, how you even cannot understand that. This is not about dollars anymore, this is about people, this is about us doing our jobs and taking care of the people who are in this city and who are working for this city. And we have to have help, or you know what? People are gonna leave.
Well, there was...
Well, can I, can I just?
You know, we're not gonna talk over each other.
I understand that.
We've done that for the last hour.
No, I understand that, but ju, to, to bring a balance to everything that we're going through, this issue has occurred because of the previous so many years. I know we've said that. We have been handed a deck of cards to deal with, and if we were the board of any private company, because private businesses go through this as well, and we have all been there in some way, shape, or form, where we go years upon years of being understaffed, being overworked. Everybody deals with that, and I get that, but at the same time, we have been making calculated risks, calculated risks. Every time we hire somebody, it's a calculated risk as to what we're doing, because in the next year, we're gonna tell this person or multiple people who just uprooted their entire life to come work for us as an employer, and if I'm an employer, I have the responsibility of being there for that person once I've employed them. If I perceive in the next year, I'm gonna say, "Sorry, I can't afford to pay you, so therefore, I gotta let you go." We're doing, that's the risk that we're taking, and we are, we, we had the miscommunication, apparently, that we were going to do this, pursue this, and then pursue potentially a third party taking care of payroll, and I understand there has to be that there. But in all transparency and context of both sides, is, it's not a personal decision. We want to hire and staff every office to where they have nothing but full-time employees and everything rolls. If we can't make payroll next year, and we're gonna tell a police officer that we just hired not too long ago, "Hey, sorry, you just gave, you know, your life to, to serve the, the people of Prior Creek, and now we gotta let you go", just keep that in mind with the way you vote.
And I, I do wanna say one thing, we were looking at possible funding and how to make it work. It's not that I don't want it to work, I just wanna make sure we can make it work. There was something that we had, since we're still in a hiring freeze, it's never been rescinded, that we should be responsibly hiring, and responsibly means making budget work, and an underfunded budget is not a balanced budget. Yes, you can have it in the budget, but if the budget's not gonna be met financially, so we're trying to balance things. I, I wish we could fully fund and, and have people everywhere that we need. That's not the issue. We have to make sure that the bills can be paid. And that's, that's the concern, and I think there's some things that we can look at and see that maybe by the next meeting, we can have a better solution on funding, other than that.
Mr. Mayor. The current city clerk that we have stepped up when this city, she inherited, she inherited a mess. She probably inherited the worst mess ever from the past administration of a city clerk in our history. And I totally get and understand that she stepped up, she jumped in there and ran for this office, and no one else did. And we knew she was stepping into a mess, and we owe her the respect, and we owe her workers in the city clerk's office the respect to give them the manpower and the people that they need to do the job, to keep the train on the track and manage the city. And we have never, that I recall, since you've been mayor, that we have ever said no to any other department that is in here all the time wanting to hire somebody. We owe the city clerk and her staff the respect to give them the manpower they need and to help them out. That's all I have to say.
Call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Bushiers?
No.
No?
Yes.
Trammell?
No.
Gantier?
No.
Smith?
No.
I'm a yes.
What's the count?
It's four, four.
Four, four.
And I said yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I think we're on city attorney's report. I think we're finally through the mayor's report. City attorney's report, item A. Possible executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Meetings, Open Meeting Act for purso, uh, purpose of confidential communications with the attorney regarding a grievance stated April fourth, twenty twenty-five, on behalf of the Mays County. Attorney order of peace, or police lodge number one sixteen, twenty-five, three oh seven, B four. Motion. A motion from Bushiers, second from Gantier. Call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Shears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lamont?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
Lamar?
Yes.
Yes.
Item B, consider resuming executive session. No action taken during executive session.
Motion.
Second.
A motion from Brashers and a second from Gantier. We can call for the vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Robshire?
Yes.
Item C, possible action based on executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communication with the attorney regarding a grievance dated April 4th, 2025, on behalf of the Mays County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 116, 25307B4.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the city council will reaffirm and/or concur with the actions of the chief of police made earlier in reference... No, let me rephrase that. To... That the city council will reaffirm or concur with the actions taken by the chief of police in regarding the grievance that was dated April the 4th, 2025, uh, on behalf of the FOP Lodge.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna give it to Lori. She was quicker than you, Chris. So we got a second. From Bradshaw. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Brashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Robshire?
Yes.
It's that time again, folks.
Item D, possible executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communications with the attorney regarding a grievance dated April 4th, 2025, on behalf of the Mays County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 116, 25307B4.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the city council will reaffirm and/or concur with the actions of the chief of police made earlier in reference... No, let me rephrase that. To... That the city council will reaffirm or concur with the actions taken by the chief of police in regarding the grievance that was dated April the 4th, 2025, uh, on behalf of the FOP Lodge.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna give it to Lori. She was quicker than you, Chris. So we got a second. From Bradshaw. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Brashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Robshire?
Yes.
It's that time again, folks. Item D, possible executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communications with the attorney regarding a grievance dated April 4th, 2025, on behalf of the Mays County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 116, 25307B4.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the city council will reaffirm and/or concur with the actions of the chief of police made earlier in reference... No, let me rephrase that. To... That the city council will reaffirm or concur with the actions taken by the chief of police in regarding the grievance that was dated April the 4th, 2025, uh, on behalf of the FOP Lodge.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna give it to Lori. She was quicker than you, Chris. So we got a second. From Bradshaw. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Brashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Robshire?
Yes.
It's that time again, folks. Item D, possible executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communications with the attorney regarding a grievance dated April 4th, 2025, on behalf of the Mays County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 116, 25307B4.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the city council will reaffirm and/or concur with the actions of the chief of police made earlier in reference... No, let me rephrase that. To... That the city council will reaffirm or concur with the actions taken by the chief of police in regarding the grievance that was dated April the 4th, 2025, uh, on behalf of the FOP Lodge.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna give it to Lori. She was quicker than you, Chris. So we got a second. From Bradshaw. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Brashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Robshire?
Yes.
Item C, possible action based on executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communications with the attorney regarding a grievance dated April 4th, 2025, on behalf of the Mays County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 116, 25307B4.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the city council will reaffirm and/or concur with the actions of the chief of police made earlier in reference... No, let me rephrase that. To... That the city council will reaffirm or concur with the actions taken by the chief of police in regarding the grievance that was dated April the 4th, 2025, uh, on behalf of the FOP Lodge.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna give it to Lori. She was quicker than you, Chris. So we got a second. From Bradshaw. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Brashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Robshire?
Yes.
It's that time again, folks. Item D, possible executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communications with the attorney regarding a grievance dated April 4th, 2025, on behalf of the Mays County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 116, 25307B4.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the city council will reaffirm and/or concur with the actions of the chief of police made earlier in reference... No, let me rephrase that. To... That the city council will reaffirm or concur with the actions taken by the chief of police in regarding the grievance that was dated April the 4th, 2025, uh, on behalf of the FOP Lodge.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna give it to Lori. She was quicker than you, Chris. So we got a second. From Bradshaw. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Brashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Robshire?
Yes.
It's that time again, folks. Item D, possible executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communications with the attorney regarding a grievance dated April 4th, 2025, on behalf of the Mays County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 116, 25307B4.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the city council will reaffirm and/or concur with the actions of the chief of police made earlier in reference... No, let me rephrase that. To... That the city council will reaffirm or concur with the actions taken by the chief of police in regarding the grievance that was dated April the 4th, 2025, uh, on behalf of the FOP Lodge.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna give it to Lori. She was quicker than you, Chris. So we got a second. From Bradshaw. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Brashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Robshire?
Yes.
It's that time again, folks. Item D, possible executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communications with the attorney regarding a grievance dated April 4th, 2025, on behalf of the Mays County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 116, 25307B4.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the city council will reaffirm and/or concur with the actions of the chief of police made earlier in reference... No, let me rephrase that. To... That the city council will reaffirm or concur with the actions taken by the chief of police in regarding the grievance that was dated April the 4th, 2025, uh, on behalf of the FOP Lodge.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna give it to Lori. She was quicker than you, Chris. So we got a second. From Bradshaw. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Brashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Robshire?
Yes.
It's that time again, folks. Item D, possible executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communications with the attorney regarding a grievance dated April 4th, 2025, on behalf of the Mays County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 116, 25307B4.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the city council will reaffirm and/or concur with the actions of the chief of police made earlier in reference... No, let me rephrase that. To... That the city council will reaffirm or concur with the actions taken by the chief of police in regarding the grievance that was dated April the 4th, 2025, uh, on behalf of the FOP Lodge.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna give it to Lori. She was quicker than you, Chris. So we got a second. From Bradshaw. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Brashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Robshire?
Yes.
It's that time again, folks. Item D, possible executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communications with the attorney regarding a grievance dated April 4th, 2025, on behalf of the Mays County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 116, 25307B4.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the city council will reaffirm and/or concur with the actions of the chief of police made earlier in reference... No, let me rephrase that. To... That the city council will reaffirm or concur with the actions taken by the chief of police in regarding the grievance that was dated April the 4th, 2025, uh, on behalf of the FOP Lodge.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna give it to Lori. She was quicker than you, Chris. So we got a second. From Bradshaw. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Brashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Robshire?
Yes.
Item C, possible action based on executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communications with the attorney regarding a grievance dated April 4th, 2025, on behalf of the Mays County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 116, 25307B4.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the city council will reaffirm and/or concur with the actions of the chief of police made earlier in reference... No, let me rephrase that. To... That the city council will reaffirm or concur with the actions taken by the chief of police in regarding the grievance that was dated April the 4th, 2025, uh, on behalf of the FOP Lodge.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna give it to Lori. She was quicker than you, Chris. So we got a second. From Bradshaw. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Brashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Robshire?
Yes.
It's that time again, folks. Item D, possible executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communications with the attorney regarding the demand later, letter dated April 10th, 2025, regarding unpaid overtime due to the members... Of the members of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 116, 25307B4.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Brashers and a second from Gantier. Call for the vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Robshire?
Yes.
Brashers?
Yes.
I tried to talk back to him. He kind of calmed down a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
You weren't in there.
I was just... Why would they start getting super silly?
I'm telling them to push their chairs then when they come. That's a lot more confidence that I actually may have had. Lori does a great job. Yep. Lori's great. Adam is great.
You're trying to get on with that right now.
And Adam Anderson.
What?
Is that transceiver?
Yes.
What? The kid is, he's the lawyer. Or is he older? He's practicing or learning to be a lawyer, I think.
That's true.
Yeah. I think he's working on it.
He just got the link, Rising Star Award for R S U. That's prior to red. For him? Yeah. Mom, Dad, and teachers. That's awesome. If you have a good, um, I feel like we turned out pretty decent amount of people, inequality of people out of our, uh, school systems. When they had the, when the Academic Excellence Foundation started, they used to bring a speaker in. Now they do a taste of Pryor. It's more fun. But the first speaker was the guy who was the... He was either the chairman of the board or the founder of TGI Friday's Restaurant. Okay. Went to Pryor High School. Really? And he, he played one of the, one of the most interesting things about him was he was kind of this strange kid. And he, he ran track and played golf. Okay? And he practiced them. He had, he took a driver and an iron and a putter and hit the ball and then ran to the ball. Okay? To get his next shot, ran to his next shot. He would run 18 holes for his track workout and play golf along the way. But yeah, so, um, he was probably the most famous, you know, that had done something like that. Chairman, chairman of the league. The guy that invented the flowy was from Pryor. That vacuum attachment that covered your hair. For real? Was he so awesome? So the form of Gary, uh... Oh, no. No.
Oh, I just found this out. Yeah. That's, that's a great name. Maybe it's more something like that. I'm not... Or it's...
So I, what would you like that building could use for it?
I don't think it should be sold.
Really?
Yeah. That's just...
Couldn't they have a buyer for that at one time? Kind of off the...
Not that one.
No?
Not that I remember. That's not like the, you know, hundred thousand that they were offered for the BYO that showed up anywhere, the five hundred thousand could be P E that they were told that.
No.
Those were all before any of us were here.
Gotcha. Yeah, so that's the police department, like the old police. Do, what, what was going on with that building?
Let's go back to the ground first. Let's finish that conversation. Um, so part of the research is that, um, Fred believes that there is a restriction indeed that says that as long as that is city or Pryor property, that condition is that it has to be a community gathering place.
Okay.
Now, I have not found proof of that yet. Uh, but, you know, if that's there, then one thing, it has to remain a gathering place. Uh, planned itself of some sort. Uh, in talking with some representatives from historical groups, uh, Jack Hardy, you know, that, those guys. Uh, there's, there's been a real problem. Yeah, this is gonna wind up in paper at some point, but...
Oh, we'll call it.
I'm joking. Uh, there's, there's been a real problem with people discovering that if they just get on the council...
Lights are on.
Okay.
What?
Lights on.
Oh. Everybody else is in bed, so it don't really matter. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Consider resuming regular session and no action taken during executive session.
Motion.
Motion from Brashers and a second from Gantier. We can call for the vote.
Motion from Rasheers.
Second.
Second from Gantier. Call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Okie?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Chopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay, item F, possible action based on executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communication with the attorney regarding demand letter dated April 10th, 2025 regarding unpaid overtime due to the members of the members of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 116, 25OS307B4.
Make the motion of no action.
Got a motion for no action?
Second.
And a second by Lamar. Discussion? Call for the vote.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Chopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Committee reports. Actually, before we go on that, let's take a moment and make sure we got everything, please. Anybody? I think we're good. I've got marks on everything. Okay, item A, budget and personnel.
Thirteenth.
Ordinance insurance.
Twenty-nine.
And street and maintenance.
Twenty-second, week from today.
Okay. Unforeseeable, uh, Friday, we're closed, right? Just remember that, please. Yeah?
Also, Carrie left these on our... In front of us about an author roundup at the library, April 17th from 5:30 to 7:30 where there's gonna be some local offers... Authors at. And I just wanted to highlight that. I don't know how many people are still watching. There's very few people in the audience, but I still think it's worth noting that we've got that event going on at the library.
Also got Saturday, the citywide cleanup date, um, Ray Core and, um, others have pitched in to make that possible. So that'll be a no cost to the city. All benefit. All right, I do have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We got a motion from Rasheers. Second from Gantier. When you're ready, call for the vote.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Chopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
We will call to order the Prior Public Works Authority. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 1st, 2025 meeting?
Motion.
I got a motion from Chopshire and a second from Gantier. Call for the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Chopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Okie?
Yes.
Uh, do we have a motion to approve the claims purchase orders for the Prior Public Works Authority through April 15th, 2025?
Motion.
Motion from Chopshire. Second from Gantier. Call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Chopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
No unforeseeable, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We got a motion from Rasheers and a second from Gantier. You can call for that vote whenever you're ready. We're adjourning.
Chopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw? Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Okie?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.